Square open building. So, in the past, we've talked about it, and I'm not too sure that we didn't discuss it actually back before, somewhat approved it or whatever, but in looking at it, Metz Skelton is our city engineer, and we looked at, I know for the ACS building, we looked at doing the same thing, is just using, letting Metz use that associate architect firm that he's an associate member with, and coming in, and we sit down with his plan, they would measure the property and all that, and actually put it through a whole design. From that, they can tell you how much a square foot, basically can give you preliminary cost on your building, and whoever, once you bid it out, they come in, they look at the set of plans, and they'll bid accordingly, and that's, no matter who ends up getting the job, that's who puts your building together from foundation to roof, and it's kind of their roadmap, or their way to get from point A to point B, no matter who you get out there. So, at this point in time, I'd just tell you, we're kind of at stalemate, until maybe we get something like this going.
And I think that there's statute require that an architect work, that you have to have a licensed architect.
I think Missouri and state Missouri, if anything other than foreign.
Yes, if you have a licensed architect, it'll be a good law.
Has to have a seal.
Well, you know, we know it's a fact, we've got to build a fire station. We've got our station men out there in the mobile home. And this is, and we all know this is a temporary deal. And the deal we done with the mobile home was that when the station goes up, we can resell this. So, the longer they stay in it, we're hurting ourselves as far as reselling that mobile home. I think we need to go ahead and get started on this plan, get the ball rolling, and, I mean, it's something we're gonna have to do, one way or another. We can't just keep putting it off, keep putting it off.
Do you have a motion for your?
I make a motion that we hire an engineer and get some, something drafted up, where we can at least start getting some bids on this, and see where we're gonna be at.
Second.
Motion, I have many seconds.
We could ask that...
Discussion?
Under discussion, your motion would include that we use the city engineer to use his associate firm.
I agree.
Otherwise, we'll be out trying to bid for an architect, and they do have experience and have built these type of complexes, so we can get the ball rolling faster. He has talked to them, and they're willing to execute a contract, American Sign, and we can get going on it, come back, look it over, and then we can get the bids out. And some of yous wanted to see something done by spring, I think we can do that, it's very feasible.
I'm sure all of you've had people contact your comment on our fire station that we have right now, our mobile home, so...
Can you do that?
Other people, other people coming in the city see that, so, you know, a new fire station structure is just a growing testament to our city people passing through, and they see that new structure out there.
To give Chief some direction, are we wanting to put the fire, the new fire station in the place of the former station?
I think we should. I think that's, you know, I think we're gonna get into an issue as far as the, with the airport board, and where it's gonna be at, as far as when the fair takes place, they're gonna be locked in down there during the fair. It's bad enough where they're at now during fair time. Can you imagine what it's gonna be like during the Delta Fair, when they're down the street during the head of fire, trying to get in and out?
That's a valid, that's a good valid point.
I think the, I think the main issue is gonna be a new engineer and architect to tell us, but the height of the building there in that fly zone there. Fifty feet. Where the, where the mobile home sits now, where, if we was just a few more, where the, if you look in front of the mobile home towards McDonald, there's some fence posts, if we was that far over, you can't be higher than a certain, that's that kaleidoscope that Metz has. But I think this, that's the reason, if you look at these living quarters side, you've got it on the airport roadside, to make sure we're by that glide path, we're talking about something that's not taller than, say, a thirty-two, thirty-six foot, as far as what you see on that tower back there. That's kind of to help us with a number of different trainings that we have to do, that we don't have access to now, and it also helps us clean the holes and dry them, and
I understand all the needs, so... So, if you keep having any hurdles with that, that will be better off.
So, the motion on the floor is to direct the chief to get engineering firm to get a cost on the new facility at present location of the old facility.
Yeah, and one other thing, I want to ask you real quick.
And obtain the services of our architect.
Real quick, John.
Yes?
In these plans, are you gonna try to include some offices for you and David in the plans, where you, you're gonna be at the station, or you, what's your plans on?
I mean, the long-term plans were, when we first put this together was, with, you know, in three years' time, we could have some stuff, some facilities down at the ASC
building.
ASC building. But it could be for an interim, yes.
Okay, that's...
Yes. The upstairs, if you'll see that, oh, those dotted lines, Murphy Bed Stores up in a cabinet, and it's an open room, and when you need it, then you pull them down, so...
You can use this for your office.
Combination training room, and bunk room, it could be offices up there, yes.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, item C is discuss letter of recommendation from Kennet Airport Board, AWAS contract. Last meeting, I know that we, there were some questions as to what we're looking at, so I asked the airport board to present a letter to the council, which you all see, explain this, and then... No action. That's just information for the council. We'll move on to, unless there are some questions, we'll move on to item B. Discuss city clerk upgrade. Just want to give us some time here to explain to the council, changes that has been made, some that you've already noticed, I'm sure, with the council packet, when emailed out through email. I asked department heads to get all your information to the clerk, and she'll put that in one package, based on the agenda, and it'll all be emailed out to all the council and department heads, just it helps you out a little bit, makes it easier. The municipal court, city collector has been moved, they're now in the former collector's office. The former municipal court office is vacant, and turned over to the police department, which they plan to put communications in that space. Victor Moe and Lance Davis did tremendous job moving everyone, getting a lot cleaned out. I mean, we found radiator, radiation detectors from nineteen eighty, I think. So, there was lots of antiques.
Those are, actually, those are upgraded each year.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Just stacked in there, just?
Yeah, that, well, that room was originally designed for that, when the building was built, so it's an emergency management storage office, is what it is.
But there's, and we're still got some things that we can legally get rid of. So, that's a work in progress. Phone lines, fax lines, all that's been moved. CLGW's been here to get the internet, and they've actually installed a new internet head, it's, I couldn't tell you what it does, but they said it's pretty expensive to do. Computer software in your packets. Crystal has called many city clerks in different cities, from all over, all over the area, multi-states, asking about software, and what they do, and how their office works. So, instead of reinventing the wheel, we'll copy from someone that's doing, that's doing it right, you know, that's, and she's came up with this company, CSA Software Solutions, and this is, it's nothing to vote on tonight, but this is stuff that we need to bring to the agenda next meeting. This is software that will do what the council has asked the clerk's office to do. This will take, it's designed just for municipalities.
I thought we had that already.
We have QuickBooks. And...
If it's older, that would take care of it.
It doesn't, no sir. The QuickBooks right now is set up as two separate companies within one company. You got General Ledger, and then you got Payroll, but there's no checks being made out of it, and it's two separate entities. Payroll, or the, according to what we were told, state auditors, using QuickBooks is basically a software for businesses. There's a different type of accounting, between business and municipal government. Don't have to what type of county, it's wait, but it's two separate types. But more or less, QuickBooks will not work. This will, this software will allow all departments to log in remotely, and in their office, a password, they can pull up, not change anything, not, not write anything, but view only. They can view their, their expenditures.
Budgets on the...
Budgets, financial, everything is viewed. I would like to be able to see where the public has access to, to some of this information too, you know, that's, that's the way down the road, but right now, we just need to get our department heads up to speed, as far as their financial workings. I don't really want to get it, hold on to the software, that's next meeting, but this allows you to get time to look it through this, and call up Crystal if you've got any questions, what all community members in here that uses this software. That's the nuts and bolts of this particular software package. Try and set up for Missouri lag loggers, and Blue Cross Blue Shield, and Murma, for all three ladies in the office. So, everybody is learning the roles, you know, learn each other's roles, so it'll be a smooth, if someone's out on vacation, smooth transition over this time at all. I know it's a lot of information, but they've been busy for a couple weeks, so that's just the clerk's office in a nutshell right now. Any questions? Since not anyone moved on?
I have my thanks to the work session. Every year, we have an ethics ordinance, we usually do it about this time of year. We try to do it every other year, but we try to do it every year, make sure we don't miss it, and I'll bring that back for next meeting.
All right. Anything from the committees, for the work session? Any committees been meeting?
Please committee, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
On the, we're not, do that yet.
Okay. As far as the committee meetings, I think what I'm gonna ask Crystal to do is, since we're emailing, it's all electronic, we're not using a ton of paper and postage, the committee meetings, minutes will be sent out with the packet in the work session area. That way, the whole council can see what's going on in the other committees that they may or may not be a part of.
So, when we have like a police committee meeting, you want us to send you, or send just to Crystal a copy of the minutes?
Oh, she's gotta have that regardless.
I know that, but it's what, you know, I always done it, I'm not sure, but, so that's, that's the process.
Yes, ma'am. All, every meeting that's held, it's gotta have minutes that's given to Crystal. She's gotta maintain all possession of that.
But then you're saying she's gonna send it back to everybody?
She will send it to everybody, by email. And that way, everybody can look at it home, and in their own time, if there's any questions, they can bring it up during work session, and we can discuss it.
There'll be, there'll be no more packets?
Unless you request one, they'll be all sent like fun.
Well, that, how soon, what? Well, now, I got my packet today, had no line yesterday. Could we get it sooner than that? I know you had a computer problem, yeah.
Sorry, dear. The actual scanner would not, or excuse me, the actual computer that I have would not recognize the DVD in order to download the actual program to run the scanner. It's an Aldi, Aldi, Aldi. And anyways, there was a person that came in and found a computer that would read the DVD, loaded it on one of those sticks, and then put it on to my computer in the clerk's office, and at that time, we could actually run the scanner, so, our computers are weird.
Any difference on the list, but we're gonna be looking at hardware also, computer rates, I mean, in order to get what the council requests, we're working with fifteen-plus-year-old computers, so we're gonna need, need to work, you know, invest a little bit.
I was unable to download the PDF from there. I was, I was unable to download Randy.
Now, Randy's didn't come through clerk's office.
I was unable to download print.
Crystal's under a document file. Crystal's under PDF files, two different files, so you may have to get a PDF file if you're...
It's free, you can download.
Yeah, you can download them free. Those two different formats, Randy sends them.
Well, mine was from Randy, though.
Yeah, his is a different format than my Crystal use, hers was PDF file.
What I, what I get from the city, I can download from Randy.
That's where everything's gonna be coming through. All the department is gonna funnel their information to clerk's office, and then she's gonna distribute it to the council. Now, if you all want it by paper or mail, just request it, but it's gonna come late. Email is instant, you know, as soon as the package is put together, which, when do you think you might have packets together? Thursday before the meeting, so you've got five days?
I would, I mean, I would rather have it that way, but give you time to look at them.
So, I agree.
I want, it's kind of off subject, but just a reminder, whenever you're sending emails to each other, or committees, or to the, or for the entire council, or any, any emails that go in the city, you need to copy Crystal on, she's custodian of reference under the sunshine on, they need to be copied, and not all be available publicly, may be protected, but she still needs a copy.
If we email just one other person, or?
Yeah, all. City business, you need it copied. So, we'll have more information two weeks from tonight.
Back to the committee?
Committee.
Would you be, are we interested in possibly announcing where we want to start our construction? Go ahead and...
We've lost McCovey.
Our, for our street work?
Oh, sure, if you, sure, if you want to get a report on that.
You want to do that? Let's go for it.
Really, you will?
Okay. What we're looking at, we've decided to go ahead and start our first big project with the tax money that we've come up with for the...
Transportation tax.
Transportation tax, and we're looking at trying to take the road from west of town, go in west on eighty-four through the rest of the town, where we lose our sidewalks and have all of our major drainage problems, and road problems, and all that. I felt like that that would be the way to get our transportation tax money spent first, and try to show the public what, that we're serious about this. So, we're looking at trying to do the paving, sidewalks, curbing, all that, and the rest of the city of Kennet, westward.
From the square of west?
Yes. Well, not quite. But we begin a progress.
Start at Jones Street, won't you?
Yes, right in that area.
I'm not really clear on that, sorry.
So, we're, we're still working on our details of it, but that's our, that's where we're looking at starting.
To clean up the west side of town, you know, to promote more business, get some curbs, get some sidewalks there for safety of pedestrians.
Busy, busy street, and it looks bad right now, and we're gonna try to make it look good, sort of blow it down.
You'll make a lot of people happy.
Yes.
We'll keep it updated as we progress. All right, anything else, as far as committees has met, or wanted to discuss? All right, we'll move on into approval minutes from August sixth, two thousand thirteen. Most of this...
Motion.
Motion to approve?
Okay.
We have second.
I have one, I have one correction, I think there's something that needs to add, it's just a small thing, and I realize what the problem is, that somebody else tipped the minutes, and somebody else played the type of note, so, but it's just, on the, the thing there, animal control committee, four lines up in the bottom.
Okay.
This is a partial sentence, it says council McVay responded after five days. I believe what he said, after five days, the animal would become the property of the city, probably answered what he said.
Yeah. That's why we asked for your corrections.
It was a difficult situation, I know you didn't even have the minutes.
With that correction being made, is, are the minutes, any more corrections be needed? We have motion in seconds, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
All opposed? Motion passes, it's approved with the convention. There will be no... Thank you, Ms. O'Callaghan. Who participates? Anyone here tonight that wishes to speak to the council? Yes, sir?
Do I go up here, or sit here?
That's just fine.
Thanks. I wanted to ask about the sidewalks in Kennet, similar to my ramp, where you can get bicycle and wheelchairs on them, and if you notice, you see a lot of wheelchairs now, because a lot of improvement has been done, and I always wondered if there could be any more improvement on other sidewalks. The town looks great. It's clean, it's a great city, and I wanted to mention also, if I may, that something else, that the ministerial alliance loved the idea that you allow a preacher or minister to come in here and pray before the meeting. Not every city does that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Well, that's, I think, Councilman Palmer, where we're discussing the west side of town?
Yes, sir.
When we install new sidewalks, they will all be handicapped accessible and ramped.
I've been invited to First Baptist Church, and I can't get there from here. Very carefully, I have to be careful.
I think that's, that's gotta be one of our priorities, it has to be accessible at all.
Well, and anytime, anytime sidewalks are repaired, or anything like that, major repairs, they have to be eighty-eight block.
So, we're working on, so we'll be working on.
All right, thank you, sir.
We're putting the transportation money to work. Thank you for your attention.
While we're, while we're talking about sidewalks, Chief, when that brought this up some time earlier, they've got the radar sign down on College Street, and they've got a chain to signpost there, but they've got a setting straddle on the sidewalk. I'll check and do that. So, we'd asked previously if they would at least try to set it to one side or the other, or double sidewalk.
Sure.
Not right on top of it. Thank you.
Anyone else tonight wish to speak to council? Everyone close that, moving to department reports. Anything from the departments? Mr. Carter?
Good evening. As part of the personnel manual, when your construction is done, it calls for approval by the mayor, or, well, street sidewalks and stuff like that, it calls for approval by the mayor and the department head, which would be me. After we approve it, then it has to be formally accepted by the council as part of the personnel manual. In the contract, we have the Hudson Brothers on the intersections, they have completed the work on West Washington and Wiggs. We've respected it, and we need our approval, so I would request that the council formally accept that construction work. This would allow them, and I don't think they will, this would allow them to bill us for that one intersection if they feel necessary, and that's part of the contract, instead of billing us for all three of them at once. Is really the reason for doing one intersection at a time.
You, you say this is complete and correct?
Yes.
So, move?
Motion in a second, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes, if you will. Yes, sir? Thank you.
Just a couple of things, real quick, bring council mayor up to date. You recall here, week or so ago, we were supposed to have a meet, the police event out at Jones Park on Saturday, and we were rained out, so that has been changed to this Saturday, the twenty-fourth, from one to four, at Jones Park. Each one of the mayor and the council should be receiving an email on that invitation also, but I'm here to invite you all to that event, it'd be great to have you all out there. We're looking forward to some of the activities that are gonna take place out there, and the opportunities to get the, the police department to start working together and communicate better, so that would be the Saturday of, from one to four, at Jones Park. Couple other things that we've done recently, that you've seen, we're starting to get the new police cars in, and you've noticed those, and we would invite you to come over and take a look, especially as we get those equipped, that you can take a look and, and look at the equipment that's in those cars, and, and what the council approved, and I think you'd be pleased with what you see. We've also launched our Kennet Police Department webpage, you can access that at Kennetpd.org, and we waited till now to announce it, trying to get, do the kinks out of it, make sure it's up and running the way we want, and that will be improved, and there'll be more information coming out on that, but we're looking at doing is tying that into the city's webpage, and being able to provide a lot more information to the public, and anybody who wants to look at the police department via the web. In addition to that, there's a Facebook page, it's also tied to that, and the purpose of putting those, both of those online like that, was, we weren't providing our press releases via email, and now, all, everything that we do will be via the webpage, or via the Facebook page. So, right now, all the media outlets, they've all been notified, they know that if they want press releases, that's where they go to access that information. And one of the reasons that we did that is that we had an incident here several months ago, where we issued a, a, a press release, and one of the media outlets picked up the press release, and there was a little bit of a tweak that was made in the, in the press release, which caused a phone call to be made to myself, with somebody challenging the accuracy of the information that was on the, the media release, and it was, it turned out to be more, but it had a miscommunication, or a lack of communication between the father and his son. And once the point was cleared up, and the father called back, he said, "Thank you very much, I'll take care of it, I'll deal with my son on that." So, the whole point being is, is we put the information out, and the media picks it up off of our webpage, is that they can't change it, because it'll be out on the webpage, and that's the way we issued it, and that's the way we asked it to be reported. So, oh, and then the tasers that approved through the police...
Foundation.
The foundation, yes, thank you. Those have been delivered, and we're in the process now of making sure that everybody's trained and certified on those, and we'll start seeing more of the officers carrying the tasers.
When is praying, when is praying day? Or is that a shocking day? We have presentation, and what the council makes?
You just want to observe.
If you would like to experience...
No, sir.
Well, we'd be, we'd be running the combination anyways, but that training will take place for a short while, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Chief Lodge, you guys done anything else, or?
Real quick, I promised you the last meeting, we'd have the end of the month reports, we're having some computer problems. In fact, it was a plague. A lot of it's due to moving around, we're gonna be moving again, relocating, I hear, into some other facilities, myself and Assistant Chief behind Station Three, so you'll have him before the next Thursday night, he'll be included into the downwind channel. But other than that, everything really reports, and trying to work on getting Station One now, and I guess there, any official opinion from you on that? Looks like we may have to, is maintenance considered in under...
Right in one, what maintenance? Well, you painted, Corkey said that painting a, or... Well, you painted, Corky said that painting a, or our laborer says that painting a, a water tank is, is repairs on, under a providing wage.
We shouldn't be looking at tearing out anything as far as, you know, brick and that, might be like coating the, the brick with a.